Heavenly fathers, we gather here tonight to do county business. Please enter into our minds that we do the right thing for this county and the citizens that within it. Also, in your name, ask us to do everything that we can to help citizens across the state. Help this be the beacon of light for what needs to be done in government. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pleased to meet you, citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic which is famous, one nation for God, indivisible, just as it is.
I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight. Appreciate you coming in for county government. Also, at the same time, Nick, we are glad to see you. And I'll tell you, these screens are crystal clear. You got one mustache hair out of the way right here. But no, we're glad to have you zooming in.
William Gutman.
With that being said, do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Motion by Mary, second by Travis. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, what is our consent agenda for tonight?
As in?
What is our consented?
I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it.
Okay, is it? Yes.
It's the May 10th minutes.
That's the only thing I saw, it was the minutes.
I haven't seen this.
The last ones.
I have not. They're not attached to our packet. I thought I had read it. They were not attached to our email, they're not attached to our packet. We're voting to approve something we haven't seen.
It was on, was it not on the first one? I can't, I would say.
It was not on either one.
Not the first one?
I can see, well.
Because we had a reminder that was sent out.
I can resend it, I've got a copy here if you want to see it now.
Well, we can, we can just delay the adoption of that after it has been sent out.
That would be appropriate.
But I was thinking it was on the first one, there was two sent out this time.
It was not, we never received.
Okay, I was thinking I saw it on the first one, but okay. All right, additions, deletions to the agenda.
I need it.
Motion adopted as is.
As is.
No additions, no deletions. Okay, do we have a motion adopted as is by Mr. Scurry, second by Mr. Reader? Any discussion on that? All in favor? It is unanimous with, Nick, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Employee recognition. Tonight, we get to recognize three employees and quite a few years of service amongst them all, so we're proud to have them here. First of all, it's Chief Zoom with Public Works. Come on up, my friend. We've had to find your hand, it has actually dropped off here, but it's not, again, without appreciation of your 15 years of service. Stand up here and look, you get a picture of this man, my friend. Michael Schriller, 20 years. He's not here?
He's on vacation.
On vacation. Ms. Shannon Murphy, 25 years. Only other accomplishment I got to say that's probably greater than that are your kids and having to put up with Murphy. Congratulations. Y'all stand here, he's gonna get a snapshot of y'all right quick. Thank you. Thanks to y'all, thanks for being here for as long as y'all have with the county. Again, take great pride in longevity, it does a better service to our community, et cetera. So again, for those of you who have made the commitment to stay with us here in Newberry County, we truly do appreciate it. Item number four, committee report, Economic Development Committee, 61421, Mr. Rick Farmer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Delighted to be here, report on what's going on in the Economic Development Department over the last quarter. The committee did meet on Monday night, we had a long agenda, but we, we worked through it relatively quickly. Now, obviously, a lot of the items that we discussed are executive session items, contractual negotiations, projects in progress and that kind of thing, and I can't speak about those here, but I will give you the open session report. I gotta turn it on. There we go. Project activity is relatively slow at this point. It's been slow since spring of 2020. It did pick up in the fall, we saw a couple of new projects, and we're, we are working very closely with one of those projects in the late stages today. I went out and took some pictures on Monday. This is the new solar farm in Bush River Industrial Park. This occupied a very hard-to-market 55-acre site because of the topography. It had been vacant for years and years. This was a $5 million project, relatively small project, but it was our first in earnest. Just a reminder that we've announced two expansions so far in 2021, and we're working on several more that we hope to bring to fruition before the end of the year. Of course, the KR expansion is a matter of public information, this was passed by Congress, excuse me, by a council a couple of months ago. It is, it is a work in progress, but as you can see, they've made very good progress. Several interesting things about this project, but one is that it's going to be two stories of manufacturing, which is relatively unheard of, at least in the, in the South, where we can spread out more. But this, this of course will effectively triple the floor space of KRA here in Newberry, and triple the workforce at KRA. The schedule for completion, or at least the schedule for a certificate of occupancy by September, and they could be up and running before the end of the year. So that's, that's going along very well. I did meet with the owner about two weeks ago, and he's very pleased with the progress. Of course, as you all know, you passed a budget amendment earlier this year that allowed us to expand Mid-Carolina Commerce Park. Of course, this is our premier Class A industrial park at Exit 82 near Prosperity. One problem we've had since the very beginning was there's a creek that bisects this park, and we did not have a way to traverse that creek. Well, thanks to council and its foresight and its funding, we will be, we'll be traversing that creek this summer. Bids are out now. I want to thank Crystal and Purchasing Department for that, and thank Finance Department for helping us through with that budget amendment that makes all this possible. We will, we will cross the creek approximately here, and we will put asphalt to about here, and there's water and sewer that's involved there as well. Now, there have been some obstacles along the way. We did not receive as much funding from the South Carolina Power Team that we originally thought. We asked for 1.85 million, they're giving us 1.5 million, which we certainly appreciate as a major amount of money, and we're very appreciative of that. So we had to scale back the plans at that time, and then we received notification about two weeks ago that we did not receive a rural investment authority, infrastructure authority, grant of $500,000 that we were counting on. We were explained, we did a debriefing session, and we did not receive that because ours is a speculative project. We don't have a project that hangs in the balance here. Every project they funded this cycle was a, funded a real project with real jobs on the line. So we were just left out in the cold on that. Now, we are planning to scale back one effort here. See the master plan? Right here is where we plan to do a full pad, 300,000 square foot, full, fine-grained pad, and it costs about 1.5 million. We're going to scale that back and make it a smaller pad so that we can fit the water and sewer into the budget, and we don't have to come back to council and ask for more funding. So we're continuing to move forward there. Bids are opening on June 24th, and we should have dirt moving within the next two months. We're very excited about that. It's been a long time coming.
When you say scale back on the pad.
Yes, sir.
Are you actually physically?
But it also includes the other site components such as stormwater basins, underground drainage, that kind of thing.
But we're not actually pouring in?
No, 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 sir. That would be.
So if we got additional funding, it would be easier to expand the size of that?
Yes, sir. It would be. It would be. And a 300,000 square foot pad might not be what we need anyway, so, so we'll scale that back to fit within the budget, and, and we'll have a, an entire site of an industrial park that's been opened with a new pad there, and I think that will help us on project activity in the future. The Mid-Carolina Commerce Park II, which of course is this property on the other side, this is Mid-Carolina Commerce Park, this is the property we purchased a few months ago. We already have one prospect who is, who has, really wants a site in this, in this park, and we're working in late-stage negotiations there to make that happen. All the due diligence is complete on this, and, and of course, we own the property. We did, I did include in my budget request funding for a road and an entrance to this park, that was cut, so we have, we have the money to buy the property, but we do not have the money to develop the property. So that's something we're, that's a problem we're going to have to address in the future. We received a site visit in May by the Strategic Development Group. We submitted this to the state's Palmetto Sites Program. You all remember the, the old certification program? This is a scaled-down version of this. It's not as expensive, it doesn't take as long, but it's just as worthy. So we've gone through that, we got a very positive evaluation on this property, and this is now designated a Palmetto site. So that's something that will help us recruit.
Another question before you leave that. Now, you can't go into any details, but the potential client that's looking at that property, what is the size of the property, and how much area are they looking to utilize?
About, let's see if I have here. This is our basic, we had two designs. One was a million-square-foot box that covered the entire front of the property. This is the more logical three-site design. These are approximately 30-acre sites with 300,000 square foot buildings. The project we're working with now is going to be about 230,000 square foot building, and it's going to be sited somewhere between 25 and 30 acres.
Okay, so it would, assuming we went forward, or whatever, they went forward, we would still have two-thirds of that property available for other development?
Yes, yes. And some of this property here is developable as well. It's not as good as this property because of the topography, it slopes forward, this is the Palmetto Trail, the old rail bed. It slopes if you get that way. Of course, we have to have stormwater retention for the entire property, but we will have several good sites back here as well. Most of you know that Mr. Fretwell is marketing his property across, excuse me, across South Carolina 219 from the Newberry County Industrial Park. He's agreed to allow me to market it as well. This is the site design, it's 950 acres basically of mixed use between residential, commercial, and industrial. We did receive a $5,000 grant from the Central South Carolina Alliance to do a drone video, a marketing video of this property, which has become a must in modern economic development marketing. It's one of the first things that site consultants and corporate executives look for. They want to eyeball the site, and the drone video allows us to do that. We did run an ad on, in South Carolina Biz Magazine recently promoting the Newberry South Industrial Site, which is a property we bought online last year. And we, I do continue to plan attending Korean Mission in October. Part of that is still up in the air, because as of today, if you travel to Korea, you have to go through a 14-day quarantine, even if you're vaccinated. We're hopeful that they will amend those rules. I am vaccinated, I can prove that. We're hoping that between now and the mission time that they will, because it effectively kills the mission if we have to, if we have to be in quarantine for two weeks before we even have the first meeting. So, so that's something we continue to plan on. And other, I do not have a Central South Carolina invoice for this quarter, normally you have one for each quarter. The next invoice will be cut on July 1st, so I will bring that to the committee in the September meeting. Of course, we do the, we continue to visit our existing industries. A lot of times, it's something they've asked for a meeting, or they're planning something, and a lot of times, it's just routine and fairly random. As you know, we're looking for a new economic development specialist for the department. We've been advertising for about three weeks. Thank you so much, Catherine, for all of your assistance on that. We've received five applications, so I'm a little bit disappointed in the number of applications, but we do have a couple of what I believe to be qualified candidates there. So we will probably end the, the recruitment period the end of next week, and then we will coordinate with the interim administrator and the committee chair on interviews and so forth. We held a Workforce Opportunity Summit. It was a three-way partnership between Piedmont Technical College, the South Carolina Department of Commerce, Apprenticeship South Carolina, and of course, the Economic Development Department. We had nine local industries that attended, which is actually relatively good attendance, these are very, very busy people. It was a very robust meeting. A lot of times, these things turn into complaint sessions, and right now, with the workforce issues, you know, industries do have a lot to complain about. But we had a very good meeting, it was a back-and-forth, it was a dialogue, it was not a lecture, which I think is very conducive to learning about the issues within our existing industries. The comments were very positive, we plan on doing these fairly routinely from now on. One of the things I learned is what some of the industries are doing to find workers. As we know, they're all struggling, virtually everybody is hiring, and they're all struggling to find workers. There are reasons for that that, that I won't get into, but, but I learned some things, like some companies have introduced retention bonuses. In addition to assigning bonus, they give you a retention bonus for staying and not leaving. I heard another talk about a commuter bonus. If you drove more than 30 minutes to get to the facility, they will help pay for your gas. So there are, there's a lot of creativity going on out there, and the industries are still struggling, there's no doubt. But there is a very, very positive benefit to the community, and that is forcing wages upward, especially for the lowest-wage workers out there. So that's a positive for the entire community. That concludes my open session report. Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to field any questions.
All right, thank you, Rick. Anybody got any questions for Rick?
I just want to say, I appreciate the job that you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Reader.
I know it's been kind of tough now since COVID is still lingering, but thank you for the things that you do.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Rick, I think this is more of a comment than a, than a question, and I would just say, I'm so pleased to hear you talking about the workforce issues.
Yes, sir.
From the day I came on, everybody here knows that's been one of my major concerns. We actually have businesses that can't open, some of the restaurants that can't open because they can't find a workforce. And so I think we as a county, I think part of economic development has to go toward that, and I think we as a county have a duty to help our businesses with that as much as we can as well, and be an active participant in that.
Yes, sir.
So look forward to working with you on that, look forward to hearing more about that, because I think that's a big challenge for us.
When we do our next industrial roundtable, I'll make sure all members of council are invited, if you'd like to come in and hear directly from these industries the things that they're saying. And, and I'm glad to hear you say that, because workforce development sometimes gets short shrift when compared to project management and so forth, you know, all the glamour's in the new projects and the big dollars. But workforce is incredibly important, maybe even the most important part of, of economic development. And so maybe we need to stop and think and, and do some planning, what can we do to improve our workforce?
I think the housing's going to be a big part of that.
That will help.
But I, I think that we, we've got a number of great businesses who have been great partners with this county for a number of years who are hurting right now.
Yes, sir.
And so I'd like to see us be engaged in that, and I'd love to attend something like that.
Well, one of the struggles I've had is, is industries being very, very busy, not having time to attend meetings, and, and not really having a big desire to bond together to find common solutions to problems. I believe some of that's changing, you know, crisis will cause people to think differently. And so I'm very hopeful that we can strike while the iron's hot and bind these industries together, you know, for the collective good and not just for the individual good.
Most people operate under the function that it's not a problem until it is my problem.
Right. It's everybody.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, council.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is introduction of county administrator. I'll take all the help I can get with this, but we do have Mr. Tony McDonald with us here tonight. We have a press release that has already been sent out to the news media, but just for those who have not, I'm going to read that press release, and it says, "Newberry County Council hires interim administrator." "Newberry County Council has engaged with the law firm, Parker Poe Adams, in Bernstein for Columbia, South Carolina, through an existing agreement to employ an interim administrator. The consulting division of Parker Poe, Parker Poe Consulting, will provide direct interim administrator services to Newberry County until a full-time administrator has been appointed. Mr. William A. McDonald will serve in the role of interim administrator for Newberry County Council. Mr. McDonald has over 30 years of local government management experience and holds an undergraduate and graduate degrees in public administration from the University of South Carolina." That's a positive check right there, my friend. That was not in the letter, by the way. Parker Poe Consulting will also assist Newberry County in the search for a process for a full-time administrator. Mr. McDonald, we appreciate you being here, thanks for being willing to take on the role. Mr. Milton Pope, you're here tonight, who has been an assistant to making this happen, or basically the facilitator, or main catalyst, so thank you for your efforts to work with us. They again will be helping us to try to find a permanent administrator. If any of you want to talk to Mr. Milton after the, after the meeting about anything that he's got plans on doing, feel free to talk to him individually, he'll be around for a little while after the meeting. But, Mr. McDonald, you want to say anything, or?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I don't want to belabor your meeting, I know probably all have other things to do, but I do want to say I'm very happy to be here, glad to finally be sitting in the seat. Spent a few weeks in preparation, but finally glad to be here, and the first three days have been quite an experience, very busy, as I'm sure you can imagine, but it's been good. The, the employees and the others that I've met and had discussions with so far have been very positive, and I'm very encouraged by what I think I see and what I think lays ahead for Newberry County, so I'm happy to be a part of that. The future, as short as it may be, at least for me, but I think there is a lot of good things, there are a lot of good things going on here, and I'm happy to be here to help as much as I can. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other council members want to speak?
Will you? Bill? Will?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Please call me Tony, T-O-N-Y.
Tony. Okay.
Yes.
Tony, thank you so much for accepting this, and I think you will find that Newberry County has got a wonderful staff of employees that will support you, and I'm sure initially you're going to feel like you're drinking water from a fire hose, even though you've done this before, because we have had void for a while.
Right.
And so, anyway, welcome aboard, and we look forward to working together.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I want to welcome you here and look forward to working with you, and we do have a lot of good employees and management in our group, and they'll all work with you and help you.
I have found that already. They've been very helpful so far.
All right, anybody else? We'll get to public, county council comments in a minute, but if you want to address that, that's fine. Okay, anybody have any appointments tonight? I think Taylor sent out the list of those who each one of you have for us. Okay, you got some?
Yeah. I got one.
Okay, Mary?
Yes, I have on the hospital board. John Pugh's term is up the end of this month, and he has agreed to take another term. He's the pharmacist in Prosperity, so I'd like to put him back on for the next term.
All right, John Pugh is the motion. Do we have a second? Second for him to be on the hospital board, any discussion?
Good man.
All in favor? Nick?
Yep.
In favor, okay. Other appointments? All right?
I've got a couple, buddy.
All right, let's get Mr. Reader right quick, since I'd already pointed to him, then we'll get you in just a second. Mr. Reader?
I would like to reappoint Adonis Hill to the Airport Commission.
All right, Adonis Hill to the Airport Commission, this is the motion, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hip, any discussion? All in favor, including you, Nick, by verbal?
Good.
Okay. Any others?
And I would like to reappoint John T. Nichols to the Water and Sewer Board.
John T. Nichols is the motion to the Water and Sewer Board, do we have a second? Second by Mary, any discussion? All in favor? Verbal by you, Nick?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anybody else here's got any? All right, Nick, your appointees.
I'd like to reappoint Doug Hip to the Border Zoning and Appeals.
All right, heard the motion for Doug Hip, do we have a second? Motion by Mr. Scurry, any discussion? All in favor? Verbal by you, Nick?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any others, Nick?
Yes, sir. I'd like to reappoint Misty West to the Airport Commission.
All right, Misty West is the nomination, do we hear a second? Second by Mary, any discussion? All in favor? Verbal by you, Nick?
Yes, sir.
It is unanimous. Any others?
I would also like to reappoint to the Hospital Board, Joe Traynor and Sean Pomeroy.
All right, let's do one at a time. Joe Traynor.
Okay.
Here we've got a motion for Joe, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Reader, any discussion? All in favor? Verbal by you, Nick?
Yes. Yes, sir.
All right, go with your next one.
Sean Pomeroy, Hospital Board.
All right, Sean Pomeroy, Hospital Board, do we have a second? Mr. Hip, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's unanimous also. Any more?
And one more.
Okay.
Westview Behavioral Health Board, I'd like to reappoint H. Randall Malloy.
H. Randall Malloy. Y'all have heard the motion for the Westview Board, do we have a second? Second by Travis Reader, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes, sir.
All right, anybody else?
That's all I'm going to do tonight.
You have not gone on vacation to clear your mind, you've been working hard, my friend. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, executive session not needing public comments. We have anybody from the public other than Mark Kaiser? You're good?
I'm good. I mean, I just wanted to introduce our new employee, Krista, can you pronounce your last name?
Lekowski.
Krista Lekowski?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, and are you being able to pick that up on the minutes? Okay, with me just saying, repeating her name, Mark Kaiser, introducing Krista Lekowski as the?
New Soul Water Conservation Board.
Okay. Welcome aboard. Anything y'all want to say other than that? You're good. Okay. All right, at this point, comments from council members? Nick, we'll go with you first.
I'm good. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hip?
Yeah, Nick, where's your tie? Just because you're at the beach, you still got to dress up.
I forgot my tie and my coat, I certainly apologize.
All right, I don't have anything yet.
Your base makeup looks a lot darker, though, some.
It's a little red.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, Mary?
Just happy to have our interim to come aboard this week, and look forward to working with him, and move forward.
Mr. Johnson?
Try to be brief, welcome aboard, we look forward to working with you, and just appreciate you. You will find, in my mind, what is the greatest county in the United States with some of the greatest people God ever put on the earth. And so I look forward to working with you, but you've got a great staff standing with you countywide, and we're blessed to have them. The other thing I'd say is I listen to these names that are serving on these boards and commissions, well, how blessed we are. Most of those folks do that without any, any compensation whatsoever, or maybe just a little bit of traveling. So we're very blessed to have some of the leaders of our community be willing to stand on these boards and commissions, and so I, I just stand grateful for, for how Newberry County bonds together, and certainly, all, all the people who make Newberry County special by working through Newberry County Government, you are a blessing.
Mr. Scurry?
I need you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, welcome to Mr. McDonald.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, welcome to Mr. McDonald, making your way to Newberry, and we're looking forward to working with you. Also like to say, good to see the sheriff back. You've been down a long time. It's good, it's really good to see you.
Better to be seen than viewed.
That's right.
That's right. And I'd also like to invite everybody this weekend to the First Annual Juneteenth Celebration. It will be from 10 to 3 downtown Newberry. It's the first annual, so it should be something interesting, and I think this is going to be a very good learning experience.
Mr. Reader?
Yes?
I think I read that the event starts, is it Bethlehem, and is there a parade, or can you give a...
It's a march from Bethlehem to downtown Newberry to start the program that's being held.
Okay.
Any other details that you got?
Other than, I know it's going to be a lot of people out there. They're going to have books, going to have authors. It's going to be a lot of history that's going to be told about Juneteenth and the reason that we're celebrating it. So it's a lot of stuff. They have exhibits at the museum. I think it's going to be exhibits in the Opera House also on Saturday. So it's going to be a real good learning experience for everybody.
And I think there's some stuff online, if you want to go into some more. I think Chambers got some stuff on there and all, too, so first of all, just go and look at it. Again, just to summarize, again, thanks for being here with us. We appreciate you joining us for whatever period of time it may end up being. Milton, thank you for guiding us to our interim and hopefully our future long-term administrator. Thanks for council members who have been enduring us not having one and trying to pull you apart and make it happen. Catherine, as human resources, thanks for coordinating all the information, getting stuff out in a timely manner to where it needed to be. We appreciate, every time something like this happens, you kind of break your pattern of what you got to do, and you did it well, so we appreciate you for that. I see we still have both of our longevity employees here. Again, y'all cannot ask for anything more than the longevity, and sometimes we have ups and down years where we can't give a salary increases and all, but, you know, thanks for enduring what you have to deal with. Thanks for enduring what has probably been one of the most difficult years since you've been here with the COVID. So with that, also, Rick, I know it's been kind of slow with economic development, but at the same time, it's been plenty to do, and you're doing it a lot by yourself right now, so thank you. And as has been said, Sheriff, we're glad to see you back out and about, and I'm sure not only we're extremely proud of that, I bet you Carol Folk Foster's just so happy to be out in the house, so...
She's been a good nurse, but she's a better ward.
With that being said, thanks to all y'all who came out. This is one of our better crowds tonight, and really not maybe as much for, just, again, just appreciate you being here. Future meetings, we have our next county council meeting. We're already at the halfway point of 2021, y'all. On July 7 will be our next county council meeting. The Public Safety and Courts Committee will be on 7/12, then followed by 7/21 with another county council meeting. And please remember, county council meetings are the first and third Wednesday of each month, and then also remember the 6 o'clock timeframe, which was new for this year. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion, second, all in favor. We are adjourned.
That was good.
I felt like this one would be quick.
I did, too. Sometimes those are the ones that...
What's that?